Good evening and welcome to the town of Emmitsburg's town meeting for the night of January 8th, 2024. As we begin our town meeting, I kindly requested everyone please silence your cell phones and turn them off, or at least set to mute or vibrate during this time out of respect to the, for the decorum of our meeting. I'll take a moment while you check your phones now. Additionally, I would ask for your cooperation in maintaining a quiet atmosphere during the meeting so that we can ensure everybody here present can hear and attend to the subject matter at hand. So with that, I ask that we please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hi. Welcome and thank all of you for coming out tonight to our town meeting to participate in the process. It's nice to see such a crowd. Future meetings coming up. Include, we have our citizens advisory committee meeting coming up on, I believe it's Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the town office. We have a board of commissioners workshop regarding water rates and financial status on January 22nd. 7:00 PM, town office or on Zoom if you'd like to attend and listen in virtually. We have a planning commission meeting, January 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the town office and again in Zoom. A comprehensive plan workshop that's regarding our revisions to the five-year comprehensive plan for the town will be January 29th, 7:00 PM, town office and on Zoom. And our next board of commissioners meeting will be February 5th, 2024, 7:00 PM, town office and in Zoom. Did I miss any meetings that need to be brought up? Nope. Okay. Right, so I hope that everyone had a chance to review the minutes. From, we have two sets of minutes, first from December 5th. And also from December 12th. I think, I'm sorry, I was gonna take them individually. We'll start with December 5th. Were there any modifications or changes that we're hoping to see?
I was gonna make a motion to ask that we postpone approval of the minutes tonight to our next meeting for both meetings.
Okay. Did you hear that down there? Um, is there a second?
Second.
Um. Do we need to do a discussion? Yes, any discussion?
Just curiously, why? What's, is something missing that you're concerned about?
Yes, I talked with the mayor, got some things just to clarification for the minutes.
Great, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Well, okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Hoover, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Okay, motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. We now invite our deputy forward for the police report.
Myself and Deputy Bartholomew, we used two holiday annual days, leave, two sick days, two training days. There's no staff changes. GFC Bartholomew worked at Christmas street lighting on the fourth. He assisted Middletown with their Christmas in the valley on the second. We both did, we both went to the senior center and spoke with everybody on the 13th. That went well. I had at least one online training this month. No fleet issues with our vehicle. We handled 173 calls for service. There were four criminal arrests and point on traffic stops. And that's all.
Questions for the deputy? I have two small questions, sorry. We had heard from residents the last two meetings about public drunkenness down near Maine across from Jubilee with regarding what is perceived to be college students and leaving bottles and things in the yards. Have you, of course, we've had the holidays, noticed anything, any activity?
We haven't noticed anything, but we have been doing more visible controls there.
Okay, all right, thank you. And especially with kids coming back, I don't know when they come back. Just keep an eye out for that. One last question. The crosswalk on South Seaton in front of the town office and the library. There's a like a turning lane next to the crosswalk, so if traffic has stopped for people to go across, we have people who are going around and using the turning lane to go, go around the cars who have stopped and have almost hit people. So I don't know if you've witnessed that, but certainly with school coming or school kids coming and going, just to keep an eye out for that. Yeah. Thank you so much.
I can speak on the, the college students. The vice president, the college, he met with me and we discussed it. They're doing some more public awareness with their students and so they, they are aware of what's going on in there, or addressing it in there.
Oh, thank you for following up on that. Okay, moving on to town manager's report. Ms. Willetts?
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for November 2023. I'll just highlight some key areas related to streets. Staff put up the snow emergency signs. They also took down all the flags and banners and put up the Christmas tree, or Christmas decorations. Related to parks, staff assisted with the turkey trot and they also repaired some equipment at the all-inclusive playground. Related to water, at the time of this report, Rainbow Lake was 2.2 feet below the spillway level. However, as of today, the lake is at 16.6 feet and we were able to reduce back down to two backwashes per day over the weekend and that our wells are maintaining. Water production and consumption, we produced 209,000 roughly gallons per day and consumed an average roughly of 209,000 gallons per day. The amount of backwash water in the month of November was 16.4%. We continue to not purchase any water from Mount St. Mary's. Related to wastewater, roughly 15.46% of the wastewater treated in the month of November was wild water. We had one spill of untreated sewage on November 21st due to heavy rain. We did exceed the plant's design capacity one time in the month of November as well. And again, that was due to heavy rain and that was November 22nd. During the month of November, we see, received three inches of precipitation. At the time of this report, we had a deficit of 2.58 inches. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of January. I just wanted to note where the items on page 13. Staff was busy in the month of November fixing water leaks and after fixing those leaks, the town flow is lower than it's been in over, in over a year. So that's very good news. And then as everybody's aware, we had pump one failure at the pump station, which caused a sanitary sewer overflow at manhole number eight and flooded the old pump station. All public staff, public work staff came in and assisted with that. We are moving forward with the construction of the new pump station. There is, the bypass is now installed and Conawaygo is our contractor and is on site moving forward with construction. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Willetts?
I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Sweeney?
The banners, I know they were taken down. I asked a couple months back about getting permission to, to finish the banners up North Seaton because North Seaton has nothing. And for the telephone poles, I know you got permission for the Christmas decorations. I don't know if we can put the banners on them too.
I don't think they ever finished getting permission from state highway. They needed bracket sizes and dimensions and a lot more information. It wasn't as easy as getting permission to put up the Christmas decorations. So I know they're still working on it, but I will follow up the staff tomorrow, see where we are.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of people calling me about finishing the banners up and they want to put their, their loved ones up there and
Right.
We have to wait till we get permission first. Thank you.
I'll follow up. Any other questions for Ms. Willetts? Commissioner Turnquist?
I have a few questions about the water and sewer in the report, just so I want to understand it a little bit better. For the well levels. Is that the depth that show, that's shown there? Is that the depth from the ground to the water level?
Yes. From, from the top down.
From the ground down to where the water is at in the well. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
And then um, do we know what the well depth is for wells one through five?
The total depth?
Yeah, or could we put it maybe on the next
Yeah, I'll have to get that for you.
Okay. Because I noticed the numbers are kind of all over the place.
Yes, they are.
Um. And then water production and consumption, we produced an average of 209,335 gallons per day.
Correct.
Uh, we consumed an average blah, blah, blah. So my question was. Let me find it here. It said we treated, let me find it. Oh, does produced mean treated? Where it says we produced an average of 209,335. Does produced mean treated?
Yes.
Okay. Are we able to produce more?
Depending on the amount of water you can produce from the la, or get from the lake as well as the water you can receive from the wells. So yes, we can.
It depends on our water levels.
Correct.
And then after that water is treated, does it go into a holding tank?
Sometimes. So we have, it's, it's very complicated. So you have, you have the lake, the lake water coming into the plant, you have the well water, water coming into the plant. Certain wells come in and they, there's the holding tank and then other ones come into the water treatment plant. And then you have what they call is the finished water and that makes up your, what we send to town is your finished water.
Any other questions?
Uh, just a couple. You, you stated that we exceeded the plant's design capacity one time in the month of November. What is the daily capacity?
750,000.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. And any other questions from the commissioners or mayor? Nope. Okay. And that will take us to the town planners report. Return to Najila. Um. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. This is the town plan support from December 2023. During the month of December, we processed two zoning permits. One of them is for solar panels. Some development updates include Fiddlestone groundbreaking on December 8th, 2023. The second one is Seton Village. The applicant has yet to update their forest conservation and delineation applications. And the third is Emmitsburg Distillery on East Emmitsburg Industrial Park to lot four. The site plan and improvement plan were conditionally approved by the planning commission and pending is applicant response to staff comments. Some development pipeline and applicant interest, I will highlight that that the DRB group has acquired Emmett Ridge property with the full intention to develop it and staff will have a pre-application meeting with them next, or this week to go over application process and the entitlement process. We'll move on to stormwater management. The Silver Hill Basin retrofit, it needs maintenance and staff has worked to find a suitable company with the expertise of complex maintenance activities and the contract is on the agenda for tonight. The DNR has modified its contract for the IIJA grant to include funding for maintenance of this basin. The planning commission met on December 11th to review the Emmitsburg Distillery plan and the comprehensive plan and has a meeting on January 23rd. Regarding the comprehensive plan and another project by the Darts of Charity. The comprehensive plan is in progress. We're putting fishing touches to some, some of the chapters and we're trying to incorporate public input from the workshops, the workshop that was held in October and the upcoming ones. There have been responses to our surveys. There are three web forms pertaining to the economy, community and environment and one web form for general comments. The report for the public visioning workshop is available online and the future visioning workshops include in January, February and March during the last week of those months. And I've listed some of the meetings that I've attended during the month of December. So like
Thank you. Any questions on the town planners report?
One.
Yes.
Emmett, Emmett Ridge. So I think if I heard you right, so they have not continued to pay their fees for to maintain their, their site plan from years ago, I'm assuming. So they're with your new, new sites, like new site plan, I guess?
Yeah, new site plan. Because the world, old one was from 1995.
For the, for the, I guess you call it the three remain, three phases remaining or whatever.
Right, yeah.
So they're going to do a whole new comp, a whole new site.
A whole new site plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we move to the grant administrators report.
She's not attending tonight. I can try to answer any questions possibly. Maddie's on Zoom, so if you have any questions.
Um, does she want to highlight anything or just taking questions?
Probably just be easier to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I do, I do have one question before I ask the commissioners. First of all, thank you for, Maddie, for restructuring how this looks based on some of our feedback. Looking at our newly awarded or pending grants and upcoming grants is, can you apply the, a similar format to those sections as well, especially looking to see which ones are matching?
So I can answer.
Go ahead, Maddie. Sorry, yeah, I can do that. Hello? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, thank you. Additional questions on the grant report? Yes, Commissioner Turnquist?
Is there not a co-pay for our streetlights?
Uh, do you mean by, by co-pay, do you mean grant match?
Yes, match or co-pay.
For the streetlight replacement project, we do have a requirement for the USDA portion of the funding.
Okay, the report says none, so if we could just update that, please?
Okay, yeah, I apologize for that.
And then the community legacy grant for FY24, I believe, is not on the list. And I think that was just awarded.
I guess, and that is because Najila was the one who applied for that grant.
Are there other grants that Najila has applied for or other staff members that have applied for that would be missing?
This is solely the grant administrators report. So Najila does have a handful of grants related to MS4 and stormwater. And then she was taking over the community legacy grant as that was, fell under the town planner originally. So we can add a section to her planner's report about the, the couple of grants that she handles.
That would be great. And then the DePaul and North Seaton waterline replacements, I wanted to, I'm curious as to what effect that will have on parking when that takes place. What is involved with that? Are they tearing up the side of the road?
We probably don't know yet. It's going to go out to bid for construction. Once we get the, actually, it went out to bid Friday for construction. As far as parking and traffic concerns, we won't know that until we actually have a winning construction bidder and see their plans and their timeline. And then we can go from there.
Most likely they will be.
Right.
Since it's in the middle of the, it's in one lane of the road.
Correct.
And they have to reattach all the water services back to the old houses to them once they've replaced them on. So it'll be the whole road.
Is it going out as for one bid for both projects or two separate bids?
It's two separate projects. The North Seaton Avenue waterline won't go out to bid, I believe, until the end of this year.
So they'll be done at separate times, so both roads don't have
Correct.
that aren't shut down at the same time. Okay.
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Maddie. From there, we will be moving on to commissioners' comments. Last time I mentioned parking enforcement, now I know to skip it, correct? Yes, okay. Commissioner comments. Starting with Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Pardon me, a couple items. On January 27th, County Executive Fitzwater will be attending a budget meeting or a budget public forum at Cottonton High School at 1:00 PM. That's a Saturday. This might be a good opportunity for members of our community as well as our elected to visit and share our concerns related to improvements for Emmitsburg Elementary School and Cottonton High School. We might also want to discuss connections to Mount St. Mary's and the forthcoming North County Regional Park and possibly Thurmond. I met with a representative of the Cottonton Land Trust to discuss their new land acquisition program. They gave me a heads up as to what their new goals are with that. The next turkey trot swag bag giveaway will occur on January 18th, 2024, will occur downstairs in the library meeting room and I believe we're going from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And that, the, the correct hours, the confirmed hours will be posted here through the town website and online. DNR, I spoke with folks from the DNR about an outdoor recreation program they host on the eastern shore. It might be a good fit for our community. There's something I'm hoping to bring back to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And staff, I have ugly news for you. This was from the disc golf course folks. They shared with me that there was a dead goose near hole two and they were very concerned about that. And I said that, well, maybe a, a team of critters will solve that problem for us, but in the meantime, if staff has to, sorry, but it has to be removed.
We had some hunting complaints last Friday related to goose hunting and unfortunately that's where they ended up.
No kidding. Okay, well, I didn't put two and two together on that. Well, there it is. Okay, and there we have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
I just wanted to thank everybody who came out this evening to share comments or just attend our meeting and for everybody who sent comments about the parking meters, good and bad and ugly. Thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I'd like to thank staff for the good job they did with the snow cleanup we had yesterday and today, the, and the people for moving their cars. I seen the mayor had posted the, that this town was clear. They could go ahead and clear up the town. That was good that everybody had moved off the street when they was asked to. So thanks for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hoover? Okay, I'll just have brief comments. Again, I just want to echo what Commissioner Sweeney said and thanking, first of all, everyone who, town staff who helped with the plowing, clearing the streets in a timely manner and everyone who moved the cars off the street so that we could have vehicles, emergency vehicles if need be, get by. And wishing everybody a happy new year. Hope you had a wonderful holiday and we're back in 2024 to start over fresh. And as Commissioner Turnquist said, we do value that you're here. This is one of the largest turnouts we've had in a long time and we'd love to see it continue. So if you, we want to have our public come here and give their feedback and there's a few different channels to, to do that. One is what you're doing now is if you're coming to public comment and attending meetings or a public hearing, also to email us at towncouncil@emmitsburgmd.gov or info@emmitsburgmd.gov would also allow your voices to be heard on different topics. As far as casual conversations on the street, we can't really bring that forward to the council, so please make your voice heard. And thank you to those of you who came to do so tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Davis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out after the holidays. I hope everybody had a, had a good holiday. I know it seemed like it flew by. So I guess everybody, we were quite busy. Yeah, we made it through the first snowstorm and I know it was a new experience for the, the snow emergency route, but I think we did a fairly good job. We had some streets that, that had a few vehicles that haven't been moved and we're doing everything we can do to get that word out throughout the neighborhoods. But I'm going to ask for your help too. If you had a neighbor or someone on your street that didn't move their vehicle, if you could help us, just try to educate them and let them know where we're headed with this. It, it really does make the, the job a lot easier for our maintenance crews to get out and get this done. And it's, I know it's an inconvenience and we get that, but you know, we're, we'll do anything we can do to, to make that work. We'll, we'll pick people up at the, at the park and ride places and get them back home and then pick them up and get them back to get their vehicles. We'll do everything we can to make it happen. That's how, how much we, we really want to see this, this work. And it's only three or four times a year. I know I shouldn't have said that. It'll be three or four times this month and I apologize, but you know, that makes up for the three or four we didn't have last year. So but, but thanks for everybody. I know we still have some people that aren't real happy with that, but we'll, we'll try to work with you. We'll do whatever we can. We talked about the, the land purchase at Emmett Ridge too, and that's been a long ongoing thing. And the, the probably the most important thing about that development is to get that second way out of North Gate. In the event of an emergency flooding condition, which could happen tomorrow. So be prepared for that. But that's a, that's a big thing there. So stay tuned for, for that. On Saturday, I was, I got to run into a group of Mount St. Mary's students that were making their way through the east side of Emmitsburg, shoveling driveways and sidewalks for, for the residents. So I know we, we beat on them a lot for things that they might be participating in as young men and women. But these, these kids were out going door to door, just not asking, just shoveling, cleaning and moving on to the next house. So that's, that was, that was really great to see. I attended a, a program presented by the Frederick County Office of Economic Development on Friday and I thought it was very interesting that our little Emmitsburg here, at least the Emmitsburg zip code, we have two of the largest employees out of the top 20 in the county and that being Mount St. Mary's and the, and the Emergency Training Center. So out of our little town, our little zip code has, you know, two of the, of the top. So that was kind of interesting. It was, it was very informative. Some of the stuff that came out, I don't see yet, but you know, there's no supply chain demand and things like that. I just didn't make it up this far yet. But the county is doing a great job of keeping us informed and keeping us in part of the program. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Davis. We are moving on to public comment. At this time, I have to, I don't know if those of you who signed up realize we have two different signup sheets. One was for public comment, which is general comment. And then we had a public hearing signup sheet, which had to do with the Chantel Glow Fiber internet coming into town. So I just want to ask Cliff, Mr. Kincaid, where, where are you? There you are. Hi. You signed up for public comment. Would you like to wait to speak during the public hearing? Yes, okay. That's okay. I'm going to move you over. I'm going to write you down, so I don't forget. If you just bear with me. Thank you. Okay. Um, if you signed up for regular comment on topics that are not pertaining to the public hearing, I'm going to invite you up to speak and when you do come up. And when you do come up, I'm gonna ask you a few things. One, come to the podium. Two, and probably most important, press the button to turn on the microphone. You'll see it light up red. So we can hear you. And then state your name and whether you are a resident within town limits. There's no need to disclose your address. From what I understand, and you'll have four minutes to speak, and you can use the guide in front of you to help pace yourself. Having said that, we turn to Ms. Cecilia. You're up first.
Hello. Cecilia Ridgeway, I live in Silo Hill. So back in late October, early November, I got a letter from the town that I needed to replace a sewer cap. The sewer, the pipe. That pipe was put in my lawn, in the front of my lawn about five plus years ago. It was done without my knowledge. I come outside of my house and I see the town workers digging the hole and putting the pipe in. I had asked them to stop working and bring their supervisor over, call the town, everything else. I got a letter because the cap was cracked and needed to be replaced. I have sent emails. I have talked with Mayor Davis and asked to find out why is this, why was this even put in when there is one already on my property? I still have yet to get an answer. I had to pay twenty five dollars to put by this cap. And I also asked, when I had sent the email, that I wanted that reduced on my next water bill because it's not my responsibility. If it's something that belongs at a town and you put it on my property, I shouldn't have to pay to replace it or fix it. That's what I have to say. So I'm wait, still waiting for an answer. I still have yet to get an answer. I don't understand why this is taking so long. It shouldn't. It should be an, an easy thing for you guys to figure out.
Well, I, I apologize for that. When I did respond back to you, you were on vacation, and I thought you told me you would get back to me when you came back to town, and
I did.
I must have missed that. Because I didn't.
I did get back to you because I even in my email back to you, which I have right here on my phone, it says that I beg to differ on the information that you supplied me, that that was incorrect. I also have a resident of the neighborhood who saw the two gentlemen that were working on my property. That you told me that the town did not put that in after the fact. I have this pipe already in my house. It's not even a foot off the building line in my flower bed that you cannot see in the, during the springtime when the flower, when my garden is full, but they put the second one in, and I don't agree with it. And I've been there, and I shouldn't have to pay for anything to replace that. First of all, you are on my property doing work without my knowledge. And that's a problem I have with this town. They do things without telling the residents, and then after the fact, they say, oops, sorry.
I agree. I, I agree that that shouldn't have happened without your permission or, or your knowledge. The town manager and myself both checked with our, our maintenance crew, and they had no records of being there. Now, we have changed sewer heads. The, the guy that would have been here five years ago retired.
Well, the one gentleman that I know that works here is the gentleman who, he, who, who came to my house. He was a shorter stockier guy. I see him all the time at Mason Dixon Mix, and in the morning when I'm there. So he is still here. He was the one who showed up. I, how long do you keep records for of work that you do on properties?
That I can't answer.
As long as Mr. Click has been here, he has records of work that they've done. So twenty five plus years records.
Okay, we'll, we'll jump back on it tomorrow morning. I promise you first thing.
Appreciate it.
We'll be back, and we'll be back with you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate that and bringing it to our attention. Next, we have Donald's son. Pass. Okay. Uh, next we have Sheila Pittinger. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sheila Pittinger. I own the Total Look up on three oh two West Main. I wasn't able to attend when everyone got together for the meters when you had asked people, and so I just wanted to have a comment about that. I have did a lot of looking lately here in town with that. And with that being said, I'm just curious for on North Seaton Avenue, all the cars that park along North Seaton Avenue, whether that is something that has been grandfathered in, that they are allowed to park there? Because it's usually, I have been counting every evening, and it's usually like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen cars that park down along North Seaton. So that's just something that I wanted to bring to attention that I have been, you know, that I've been riding around, watching and paying attention. And in the evenings, you know, I really don't see, because I leave in the evenings and come down around the back where the swimming pool parking lot is. And I really don't see that many cars sitting in there in the evening at the swimming pool parking lot. Unless it's the time that I'm going past. So I'm just, I'm just curious. You know, just to how we're going to approach this with the meters. Do I feel like we need new meters? Yes, I do. I do feel like we need new meters to make it more better for everyone around, whether it be coin or card. Do I think the approach on the other meters up on west end of town, if that's a good idea or not? I'm really on the fence about that, because most of those places up there are apartment buildings. They're not really places that you can, that I actually can see that there is going to be a business put in there. So that's just my thoughts and feelings on that. So, okay, thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Um, I will address the North Seaton Avenue, if that's okay. They've been parking there as long as I've been alive, so. Been thirty two years. No, but there, they are going to probably lose that when the North Seaton Avenue Waterline and the reconstruction of North Seaton Avenue comes in. Am I correct with that, Kathy? That parking's probably gonna be gone.
Yeah, some of the parking spots will be gone. There will be some parking still. It'll be new and enhanced and safer. So once we get those plans off, we'll see exactly what, what will be left over.
We'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comments. Or if for some reason you signed up on the wrong sheet and think you should be up now, please let me know before I move on. He's on for the hearing. He's part of the hearing. Oh, no, I don't have him on here. The mayor would like to, Devin, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, the mayor? Would invite you up.
I appreciate the invitation, Mayor. My name's Devin Peart. I was recently hired as a, a local government relations associate with the Office of the County Executive in Frederick County. So I am pretty familiar with Emmitsburg. I actually spent my last two years of undergrad here at Mount St. Mary's, so it's nice to be back, and if there's anything I can do for anybody, any one of you, please let me know. I, I'll give you my card at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
They weren't any of your beer bottles down here on Main Street. Okay, just check. All right, just check.
Okay, that brings us to our administrative business. It looks like we just have one item, which is announcing of the twenty twenty three winners of the Holiday House and Business Decorating Contest. Ms. Willis, would you like to announce the winners?
I certainly can. The announcement of the twenty twenty three winners of the Holiday House and Business Decorating Contest. Just a little background, we had contests ran December tenth through December seventeenth. We did have three judges that took the time to go out and give their recommendations. Most traditional was for, number one would have been fourteen fourteen Ramblewood Drive. In second place was seven Zenella Drive, and then the honorable mention was one fifteen East Main Street. Congratulations. Most creative was fifty three Federal Avenue. One fifteen, second place was one fifteen DePaul Street. And honorable mention was three oh one North Seaton Avenue. Again, thank you. And best business, number one was my father's footstep. Number two, the outhouse, and honorable mention was Emmitsburg Tattoo.
Thank you. Congratulations to everyone who participated. Would like to come and take a, take a bow. Hey, thank you, Ms. Willis. Thank you for all who participated, and congratulations to the winners and honorable mentions. We're moving on to our consent agenda. We only have one item today, which is for consideration, the ending the term of Amber Phillips on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, is my understanding that she is moving out of town, or she may have already done so at this point. So having said that, is there a motion to end the term of Amber Phillips on the Citizen, Citizens Advisory Committee? Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Hoover, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Okay, Ms. Willis, as far as the treasurer's report, are we?
I believe Sabrina sent out copies.
Yeah, do, okay.
Yeah, you can go ahead and present what was given. We did take out the center section. As we all know, the new accountant started on January third. She's finding her way around, and, and we were finally able to get her some access to some of the accounting software, so that'll be forthcoming.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so as of December first, our cash balance was eight million, eight hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars. Deposits, one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and fifty four dollars. Withdrawals, two hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and one dollars. And our operating balance forward, eight million, seven hundred and forty seven thousand, and eighty six dollars.
Thank you. Any questions on the report? Commissioner Sweeney.
Where, where did the money come from for the?
Sinagro, it was out of the sewer fund. Out of I believe it was the repairs and maintenance line item in the sewer fund.
Are we still using them?
No, once the bypass was completed by Conawaygo, we didn't need a pump rental anymore.
Additional, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if we had money back for the because that was extra. I don't know where.
Right.
Right, no, that just came out of your straight operating budget for the sewer fund.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Have a follow up to that. Based on Commissioner Sweeney's on comment there, can, and can we add there in, in this chart or whatever the future chart is? The actual funding source, so that would answer that question. They gave them sewer water operation or whatever.
Okay. My hope was with the, yes, absolutely. That's easy to do. With the workshop in January and the new accountant starting, we can fashion this cash activity report to show what the board would like to see. So if you will remind me again at that meeting.
I will.
Any other questions? Okay. That brings us to the Planning Commission Report. I don't. You had kind of, no, Planning Commission Report. Do we have one from the last planning commission?
Oh, I think Nadila covered it all in her report. It was mostly the discussion about the distillery.
Anything to add, or has that covered it? All right. Thank you. Short and sweet. I like it. Any questions regarding the Planning Commission activities? Yes.
Just curious about the distillery. Do we have a timeline approximately to opening? Any hypothetical?
That's sort of difficult to say at this stage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, moving on. And that brings us to our agenda items. We do have six different agenda items. Commissioners, I would like your input. Since we do have some people signed up for the public hearing, would it make sense to move the public hearing up so we can let these good people go home and get some rest?
Commissioner, would you like to take, take your vote on agenda item number two? Or are you gonna wait till that one?
That's a quick one.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do that.
Okay.
So we'll do number two and then move up to public hearing. Thank you. All right. Other commissioners, are you okay with that change? Yes. Okay. All right. So to quickly get to agenda number item two, so we can get past that, which is for consideration approval of the estimate for the prefabricated bathroom building in the Eugene Myers Park. From what I understand, the vendor has, or the that estimate has not come back yet, so there really isn't anything to correct vote on, so we are looking to remove this from the agenda tonight, and that requires a vote. Do I hear a vote to remove this item from the agenda?
I make a motion to remove agenda item number two related to the prefabricated bathroom building for the Eugene Myers Park.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any against? Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Now we can move on to the public hearing. Hopefully to get you guys home in a faster amount of time.
Do we need a, do we need a motion to recess this meeting?
Is there a motion to recess this meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
You, you really don't need to do that.
We can't have two meetings at the same time.
It's a public hearing. You don't, you don't need to make a motion. You can just move straight in and then straight out.
Okay. Okay. So we are, yeah, do you have the, the language that, yes, there you go. All right. Our next agenda item will be to hold a public hearing on the proposed cable franchise agreement between the town and Chantel Glow Fiber. At this time, the public hearing shall commence. Do I need to knock? That sounded official, so I'll do so. Ms. Willis, has there been, has this been properly advertised?
Yes, ma'am. It was advertised twice in the Frederick News Post, according to the town code. It was also posted routinely on Facebook, Channel ninety nine, and the website, and also included both of our newsletters.
Perfect. Thank you. I understand we do have some people sign up tonight to speak for the public hearing, so if anyone intends to provide testimony and or comment during the public hearing, please raise your right hand. If you would, please stand at this, we can, it's easier to do it as a group rather than everyone coming to the podium. If you signed up to speak, if you could please stand, and I'm going to read an oath. Oh, yeah. So we have Mr. Eric Sloan. We have pass. Kurt. Yes. Jim. Pass. And Cliff. All right, good. Do you solemnly swear? Oh, yeah. Stay standing. Raise your right hand. We might be able to get one.
We, we can skip the Bible.
Do you solemnly swear to affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and the statements made by you, and these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, state, I do. Okay. Thank you. You may sit down. All right, Ms. Willis?
Yes, thank you. I will turn this over to Mr. Adams, who will give you a brief summary and any of the changes that were included.
Sure, and just because we might have some more eyeballs and ears tonight, let me just do a very brief overview of the contract itself, and then I will get into the couple of changes that we've been back and forth since it was last before the board. And then I will get into the couple of changes that we've been back and forth since it was last before the board. Um, so this, uh, what has been proposed from Chantel Glow Fiber is a non-exclusive cable franchise agreement to, um, implement their system into the town's public rights of way. Um, and so that's something I want to make clear at the outset. This agreement that you're considering allows Chantel to install its equipment in the town's right of way. This wouldn't cover private property. That would be between the private property owners and Chantel. Um, it's a fifteen year agreement with the ability to renew for three additional five year terms. Any construction maintenance that is required would need to go through the normal permitting process. Need to follow all applicable town codes for construction. Um, it needs to be done in a, you know, workman like manner. There is a provision in section four point seven that would allow the town to come in and stop work on the project to the extent that any construction is not being performed adequately. Um, that is something new that has been added to this agreement. That is not in the current Comcast agreement. Most of this is governed by FCC regulation. The franchise fee that the town gets for entering into this contract is five percent of the annual gross revenue, um, that Chantel makes from providing service to the town. And that is the first place where we do have a change to discuss. The last time we talked about this, the board had asked um, that seven point one of the agreement be modified such that it would allow in the event the FCC changes the maximum amount of a franchise fee that can be obtained um, from where it currently is at five percent to something higher, that this agreement would permit, um, essentially the town to recover whatever that new maximum fee is. Um, so Chantel has agreed to that language. Now, something that I also propose to remove from the agreement, which has not been accepted, is the provision that says, provided however, that the ta- that Chantel shall not be compelled to pay any higher percentage of franchise fee than any other cable operator in the franchise area. Um, I had requested that that be removed. That was rejected and why that's relevant is you do have an agreement with Comcast. The Comcast agreement says five percent. Um, s- and the Comcast agreement does not have this new additional language that says if the FCC raises the rate, then the rate in the agreement goes up too. So effectively, as long as the Comcast agreement is in place, um, you're not going to get more than five percent the way that this is currently written. Want to make that clear for everyone? And if that was confusing, please ask. The town has the ability to terminate the agreement. Should it come to that? Um, there's insurance and indemnity requirements. Uh, the other change that, that we did have no issue with, um, Chantel did agree to provide, um, installation of an outlet for both public and private grade schools within the town. Um, that was something that we discussed at the last meeting, um, and they accepted that without issue. I think that is the ten thousand foot view. I'm happy to provide more detail or clarification as needed. And so I'll stop talking.
Questions? Commissioner Hoover.
Yes, so back to, uh, seven point one. So the discussion we had, go back to our previous meeting. Given us the FCC higher cost, if there is one, is great. But if we continue to maintain that language that we don't pay, they don't pay more than Comcast, then it really erases the increased FCC allowance. So we don't, so of course they would agree to it because they don't have to do nothing. So with.
Well, well, theoretically, I'll, I'll give you my best version of that. Theoretically, if the Comcast agreement lapses or is rewritten to reflect something different. In that case, then the language that you requested added would have some effect. But yes, other than that very limited circumstance, you're, you're absolutely correct.
When was the last time that Comcast was, was, um, granted? Wasn't that just done in the last few years? And they have a fifteen year agreement.
Right, so two thousand eleven, so we would be coming up.
Another five years.
Hmm, I guess we'd be.
Two thousand eleven, if it's fifteen years, I'd be in two years.
Two, two to three years.
I don't like the language. Uh, I think, I think, you know, regardless of what Comcast rate is, I think we should remove that. Remove that clause that says we cannot increase to rate. So, so, uh, no, so to me, so the, the discussion we had last time, really, it becomes a moot point by leaving it with one yes and one no. The no is going to override the yes.
At this point, yes.
So, we get nothing.
So can there be some kind of language that says in the event that Comcast goes up, that this one would?
Well, that exists.
It does.
So if, if the com- if we increase the Comcast, but also the Comcast, don't forget, well, if we renew it, it can say anything we wanted to say. But currently the Comcast one says they don't pay more than somebody else. So, well Comcast is currently at five percent. Chantel will be at five percent. They both pay the same thing. We can't charge the other one any more money. So we don't. I'm looking for the opportunity where the town could eventually potentially have an increase if, if it warrants and if it's, you know, I'm looking to see where, what's in the best interest of the town to get
Right.
its benefit out of another, I mean, I want, I want another competitive company. I want that, but I want, also want to have the benefit, what's in the best interest of the town.
And just also, in, in interest of full disclosure, I have no idea when the last time the FCC changed the max rate was. So just another thing for consideration, but certainly I understand your comment.
Probably forever ago. But that's, that's my take on it, so.
When Comcast renews, are we able to add the language in there about the rate adjustment?
If Comcast is willing to agree.
Then if they don't agree?
Well.
They could be dropped.
They could.
They're gonna have the upper hand. A lot of people in town have Comcast. You're not going to drop Comcast while everybody has it.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do it, now's the time. And if we're not gonna do it, then, you know, I'll leave to the fellow commissioners, but I just think here's the opportunity. I think this is the only opportunity you're gonna get.
I believe there's, there's language in here that states, um, you can't require one grantee, um, to perform or have rules that don't apply to others in the same situation. Like that we can't, we can't require Chantel to do things that we don't require of Comcast. I believe that language is in here.
I believe that's correct.
So if we were to put that language in about the rate increase, then the same language is probably in the Comcast agreement. So wouldn't we need to update their agreement as well?
Well, there's no. We, we can't update that agreement. That agreement is signed, executed and enforced until it terminates. So there, there's nothing we can do about Comcast. Un- until it comes up for renewal and the board decides to make that a negotiation point with Comcast.
Okay.
What's, no.
Any? Okay, so that concludes our staff presentation. So we're moving on to, um, allowing the representative from Chantel to come up. Kurt, Mr. Costco, please, we'll invite you up.
So it's good to be here again. So, yeah, I'd like to address that particular issue. Um, so the language that, uh, was asked to, uh, from, asked us to strike basically, uh, gives us an unfair com- uh, I guess I should say, it puts us at an unfair competitive advantage. Uh, our Comcast has an advantage in that regard. And the reason being is that you're asking us to charge the residents more in our bill for the franchise fee than you would Comcast. So our bill is going to be higher in that regard. And that franchise fee, just so you understand, make sure everybody here understands. The franchise fee is based on the cable revenues that are brought in. That's not something that we pay. That's something that we collect from the subscribers. And then we pass, um, and then we pass that along to the town. So that's not our fee that you're really looking to raise. It's actually the residents who have our service.
Where do you make your profit then?
How do we make our profit?
Where is it? And are you selling the commercials that are broadcast? Is that where you make your income source? If it's, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for that, that was not us. Looking for that source to better understand your business model.
Sure, so we offer three different services to both residential and business customers. And there's a profit margin built in. We're, we're not a nonprofit organization by any stretch of the means. We're here to spend several million dollars to invest in a system. And then basically, we want to be able to operate here. And so the, you know, the, the, the difference is, and I, you know, the same language that you're asking us to strike is currently in the Comcast agreement. So now you have two different language pieces. And also, I would just ask Attorney Adams to review section thirteen dot three in the Comcast agreement. That allows for changes, subsequent changes in the law that, um, could apply to franchise fees if the ceiling would be raised by the FCC. I would just like his opinion on that language to see if that would, uh, apply in the Comcast agreement. They may not be able to do that here now, but.
I, I will read it if you want to continue on with your presentation. And if I have an opinion on it before you're done, I'll let you know.
Yep. So ob- obviously, when we have our bill, you know, we, we have services, line items that we charge for cable, internet and phone. And then there's below the line services. There's taxes and fees. If you take phone service, there's a nine one one surcharge. If, and there's also a franchise fee. Um, and that's what we're talking about now. So we agreed to, in the language to say, yes, if the, if, um, the FCC would raise that rate, then with the proper subscriber notice, which is thirty days. I think we asked for sixty days. That allows us to give the subscribers thirty days notice saying that, that a fee is going to change. And that's an FCC regulation. We agreed to say, yes, you know, if the, if the FCC raises that franchise fee rate, we're okay with raising it on our side. I think where we, you know, we feel we're at a disadvantage here is coming in, especially coming in uh, and facing an incumbent like Comcast. Now you're asking us to raise our rate, but Comcast doesn't have to. Uh, so it's an unfair advantage for us. Now that our bill is going to appear larger to the customers for that line item and makes it tougher for us to compete. And so these are the kind of things that have always been barriers to competition in the past. We're trying to come in and ask for a level playing field so that we can come in and sell our services. Um, and that's really, you know, we, that's all we're really looking for.
So, so let me comment there. So, I mean, I, I, and I don't mean big disrespect for anything, but, but, um, you, you just said you're agreeing to raise the rate if FCC raises it. But your next line that you're not willing to take out is that you won't have a higher rate than Comcast. So there's no agreement to change the rate because that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna seal the deal for you to, to maintain this currently to five percent. And, and unless FCC raises the rate, there would be no raise for your rate. So, and I understand your level playing field, but at some point the town has to, you know, have the ability itself to, to grow and, and for the best interest of the town. But so, the, the, the plan would also be to possibly change it with Comcast. And you know, I don't know if the board will look at that in two years from now or not. I don't know. But my goal will be to put the same language in the Comcast in two years or whatever down the road. But, uh, but unless FCC changes that rate, you would not be at an unfair disadvantage to Comcast.
Currently, we would charge five percent, or the agreement would have us charging five percent the same as Comcast.
Comcast.
Right, if the FCC would raise the rate at some point, the language that you're proposing, you would have us raise the rate to the maximum, but not Comcast.
That's correct. If, if, if both languages was changed, but the one that says we'd agree to the new rate, but we won't pay more than, than Comcast. So you're, you would not be changing the rate.
Right, all we're asking.
Leave it the way that it came back to us. If you leave it that, there will not be a rate increase.
Unless Comcast is, uh.
Unless we change their rate next.
Yes, or anybody else that has a cable franchise agreement in town.
Right now, it's only Comcast, but.
Yep, right now, it is only Comcast.
But like I say, I'm, I'm looking to see. We have to start because of, because we wait in two years and try to change this Comcast, then we're gonna have the same thing. We won't be able to change their rate because we're locked into your rate. So if I don't change this one now, I have no advantage to change Comcast later. And I have to make, I have to make the opportunity today when I have it. So, and I'm not, um, again, I'm not trying to just, I'm not asking you to charge, I'm not asking you to charge the residents more. I'm just asking you to pay the town more.
Well, that's, the residents pay the fee. So you're asking the residents to pay more on our bill than they would on Comcast bill.
The franchise portion?
Yes.
Not the rest of the bill?
Correct.
So your bill could be.
It could be different.
You could eat that two percent? Anyway, that's, that's. I just think if we don't do it now, we don't get to do it. And the next board may, maybe we'll be here, maybe I won't be here, but the next board, you know, here may not see it the same way. I don't know, but.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
So here's what I'm trying to comprehend. We have potential for two vendors providing the same service or very similar services. The premise is that Chantel provides a reliable service and, you know, there's no questioning that. It, you know, we just assume that is the case. At the same time, we've seen Comcast providing a reliable service. So is there going to be a differentiation in the fee that the community pays for the service? Or is it just you can buy, you know, the Model T Ford in black or you can buy the Model T Ford in black? I mean, it's, it's the same, it seems like you're offering the same thing. So where's our competitive advantage for our community consumers? That's what I'm looking for.
So for us to come in and charge more than Comcast really prevents customers from wanting to switch. What will happen is that now you have two, two providers. Now the pricing becomes very competitive. Um, right now, you only have one. And so there, you know, there's not a lot of competition here when it comes to adjusting pricing, customer service or anything else. The advantage of having a second provider come in is providing competition. And now the fees, the pricing becomes very competitive. So I can't say that we're going to charge exactly what Comcast does. That's what, you know, that's a free market enterprise deal. So, but however, we're not going to come in and build a, a system for several million dollars and not be, and price ourselves where no one's going to want to switch services. So that, you know, that's kind of the risk that we're willing to take.
So where Chantel has already been successful, for example, the Shenandoah Valley and communities south of us. When you entered the market, were you competing with an existing cable franchise?
In a number of locations, yes.
Okay.
All of pretty much a lot of this, the where we're building fiber to the home now, uh, we are competing. And we just signed a, a cable franchise agreement with Frederick County at the end of December. So the unincorporated areas of Frederick County will be expanding in as well, competing against whoever the incumbent is.
So in the Shenandoah Valley, in the competitive municipalities, trying to compare apples to apples, did those consumers see a price advantage in Chantel as compared to Comcast during the initial rollout? For example, if Comcast is charging five dollars for the service, are you charging four dollars for the service?
I, I can't answer that, especially when I'm under oath. So I'm not going to get into pricing. I'm not going to tell you something about pricing that I really don't know the answer to. I know that we're, our pricing is pretty much everyday pricing. Um, you know, when you talk about pricing comparisons, it's very difficult to do with a competitor. Um, some, some companies come in and they'll offer low entry level pricing. And in a year, the pricing goes up when the contract, they'll ask you to sign a contract. And in a year, the pricing goes up when the contract, they'll ask you to sign a contract. Okay. And when the contract is up, or you want to get out of the contract earlier, there's sometimes penalties. We don't have contracts. Right now we have one price that's pretty much set every, everyday pricing. We don't have introductory pricing. Um, the only thing you may see that on is, would be possibly on installations. So the, the pricing comparison is very difficult because their model is different than ours or, and I don't want to, I'm not here to speak for Comcast. I'm not here to say anything negative about Comcast. I'm a Comcast customer. Uh, I'm really here to talk about Chantel Glow Fiber and what we offer.
As am I. And, and that's, I mean, I, I, I. I understand part of your side of this, but what I'm looking for is the incentive for this side of it. Because I don't see it in a pricing piece anticipating some improvement for our community. The other piece is as stewards of our commodities, you know, we have to be sure that we're working the water appropriately. We're working our sewer appropriately. Those are our bounds for our growth according to our state guidelines. And we have few other commodities, but the franchise fee is one of them. And it is our intent of, among some of us, I would argue that we're trying to do what is best for our community. And we're not trying to put you in a hard spot, but we're putting you in a hard spot.
Yeah, and yeah, yeah.
Sort of, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, but I'm, I'm just trying to see where's our motivation for, you know, uh, asking you to enjoin us in that stewardship.
Sure. So I, I've talked about this several times. We're here not asking for any money or support from the community. We're not asking you to, to pay part of this expense to build this network. We're going to come in and build it on our own dime. This is not grant money. This is money that is, is a publicly funded company that we're going to utilize our own money to come in and build a network. We talked about having state of the art fiber optic to all, to the residents, right? If you, if you elect to take our service, it's fiber to the home. We offer symmetrical speeds, both directions. There was a lot of advantages we talked about. We did, we did basically post our pricing on the, before when I did the uh, presentation, uh, was the last page of that. And so we did, we're not hiding our pricing. We, we clearly posted it. So it's really up to the community whether they want to, um, you know, whether they would like us to come in as a second provider and, and uh, provide services here. So we would love to. That's why I've been here, you know, several times. So we would like to do it. We're, we're pretty much, and we're in the city of Frederick. We're talking to other communities in Frederick County. And so that's, that's why we're here today.
Um, how much is the franchise fee that would be on the customer's bill?
It's five percent of whatever the customer, whatever cable services the customer takes.
It's five percent of their services?
Yes.
Of their bill, five percent of their bill.
Yes. It's not the internet. It's not the phone. It's strictly on the cable service portion. Yep, and the.
Not on the internet or phone?
Not on internet or phone, correct. Just strictly cable. And the, what the fee is based on is actually in the language, there's an item, kind of a, a list of things that the, uh, the franchise fee can be charged against, so. And that's spelled out in the agreement.
So the gross revenue, one point eleven. The gross revenue is, is only, it's not derived on the internet or phone, as you just said, which I didn't realize. I thought that it was five percent of the gross revenue, but it's only the five percent of the cable service that you're charging to the resident.
Correct.
So the residents are paying the franchise fee to the town.
Yes.
There's really no profit coming from Chantel. There's no revenue coming from Chantel. It's coming from the residents.
Correct.
And is it the same for Comcast? They charge, I never look at our bill. My husband pays it. Are they charging a franchise fee as well? On the.
Yes.
Based on just the cable service alone?
Yes. The, I, I believe that the two agreements are nearly identical.
In terms of, you know, increasing the rate, um, it sounds like Chantel agreed to increase the rate if FCC raises the rate, so long as they don't pay more than what Comcast does.
That's correct.
And that seems to be a level playing field, so. Although we can't necessarily raise it, if FCC goes up, we shouldn't give Comcast advantages over another service provider, in my opinion. There needs to be a level playing field, in my opinion.
And I, I think that's our position that we, that I've tried to state, so hopefully I have, so.
You're willing to pay more or charge the residents more if FCC rates go, rate goes up, so long as Comcast does the same thing.
Correct. Or anyone else who has.
Or any other service provider.
Correct. With a cable franchise agreement.
And then several times in the agreement, it's mentioned, um, any dwelling unit within one hundred and twenty-five feet aerial distance from the main distribution line. So where will the main distribution line be at? Because it sounds like you'll run your cable or your fiber optic, one hundred and twenty-five feet from that location outward. And then beyond one hundred and twenty-five feet, the resident would have to pay for the additional wire. So one hundred and twenty-five feet is not a lot.
And that language, I believe, is the same that's in the Comcast agreement.
It is.
So once again, it's a level playing, one that we, the question came up before, how much of the town would we, are we going to be servicing? The estimate that we have without designing it yet is around ninety percent plus. So, and then, and some of the exceptions could be the uh, private, if there's apartment buildings, those are not covered under the public right of way agreement. We would have to get private easements from those property owners to basically run fiber optic lines into those buildings. That would be a separate agreement.
Where would the main distribution line be installed?
Well, it's, it'll be multiple streets up and down.
So you'll have multiple main distribution points?
Yes.
And then you would go out from each one of those one hundred and twenty-five feet. So nobody technically may have to pay for additional line to be run?
I won't say that. Um, what you run into is if there's, if there's home and generally in a town or I'm, I'm used to boroughs in Pennsylvania where everything is mostly aerial. Most of the homes are in pretty, you know, concentrated area. We design it that way. We're, we're not looking to say, okay, ninety percent of you are going to have to pay us extra to get service. Nobody's going to sign up for that. So we run our distribution gable up and down the streets. And it, it'll be multiple streets where the distribution cable will go. And then the vast majority of the residents, I'm assuming, would be within that one hundred and twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Yeah. What we run into is when you're six pole lengths away and you want service. And, you know, and that, so there would be additional fee for that. Could be. Now fiber can run further than coax, so. Um, sometimes it's just extending a drop, which is a lot cheaper than building coax out with amplifiers and other things, so.
I think most of, um, our, for the old part of the town, um, east and west main street, the cables run in the back of houses, I believe.
Correct.
Um, theirs will be more than a hundred feet away, probably because the poles are like on North Seaton, my pole comes across, that's twenty, ten, twenty, I'm, I'm using the footage of the road. Ten foot, twenty foot, thirty foot. There's probably about seventy-five feet from the pole on the opposite side of the road to my box where I'm at now. But mine's a lot closer than the ones in the alley that goes to the main street. If you're on the main street, depending on where the pole was.
No, because the property is only about a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet deep total. And you're only going to be one from the pole somewhere to the back of the house, the middle of the house, something like that. So you won't go away to. Most properties are already about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet deep.
So how would they do for the new developments with the underground? Yeah, I know it's underground, but.
We would come in and bury, and I, I.
Then you have all the utility easements, much more utility easements within the, the new developments.
Yes. But all through permitting process, we would permit to basically come in and bore and put our, our service lines basically following the other utilities. Um, and then we would install a drop line. And we only install a drop line for someone who's requesting the service. We don't install a drop line for every home in the town. It's only if he requests service.
We have a lot of apartment buildings in our, in our town. Houses have been made into two apartments or four apartments, so you would have a lot of.
Well, those are a little different than a, what I would call a apartment complex. If you have a house that has two apartments and there's two meters on the side of the house and they're fed from a pole to there, that doesn't require a public or a private easement. It's when you get into a, a complex where now you have to trench lines in and you're leaving the public right away. And now you're on the private property who owns the, all the apartments. Then we would negotiate a, an agreement with him or him or her, whoever owns it. Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm just, I was, I was figuring it was under more than a hundred feet in the back. So the people on main street would have to pay for the hookup if they want it extra.
The vast majority of folks are going to pay the standard installation fee, I guarantee. Pretty much, I will go on record and say that, so.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question for you while you're here.
Sure.
Um, and I know, um, our lawyer did talk to it a little bit about section, um, four point seven with the stop work. Um, or it says, let me see here. Upon notice from the franchising authority that any work is being performed contrary to the provisions of this franchise or in an unsafe or dangerous manner as determined by the franchising authority or in violation of terms of any applicable permit laws, regulations, ordinances or standards, the grantee must stop work immediately. I know that's vague. Uh, is it really not in the sense that it is going to the public right of way? That's what is being guaranteed. There's like the public right of way and that anything happening on private property, if something happens, that would be between the private residents and you. But in the event that something does happen, and um, what in here will? Are we covered under that clause saying that we as a town can say stop work if there's an issue? So we can get something addressed if a resident comes to us and says we're unable to get timely resolution for our issue. Because ultimately the residents would come back and say, well, the town voted to, to bring you, bring them in. And I would want competition. I don't want to say that wrong. But what if anything would we have? Or is it just not our business? I don't know.
Are you asking me or are you asking mister?
I don't know. I'm kind of throwing it out there and seeing what sticks.
Um, so let me, I, I will attempt to answer that question. Um, so if something happens on a residence's private property outside of the right of way, there is not much that the town can do about it in that situation because in order for Chantel to go on to that property, there has to be an agreement with the private property owner. And so to the extent that Chantel is not complying with that agreement, that's, um, this is going to sound flippant, but that, that is not the town's problem. That is the private residence problem. That's the extent that there's any question with the work that the town is doing within the public right of way, or I'm sorry, that Chantel is doing within the public right of way. Whether it be an issue, just, you know, following our permitting ordinances or construction ordinances. If there's any piece of this agreement that they're not honoring, that applies to the town. There are remedies that the town can take, ultimately could terminate the entire thing. If, heaven forbid, we got that far, which would not be ideal for anyone, I think. And there's indemnification. The town is covered for, the, the town is covered with respect to the work that is being done on the town's property. Once we get off the town's property, there's not much that can be done about that.
Okay.
From the town's perspective.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And let me, I'll just close the loop on, uh, thirteen point three. I don't think that's really applicable here, to the extent it matters, but I, I appreciate the thought.
It's a good try, so.
It was a good try.
I think this is the first time that some residents are hearing about the, the new services that are being proposed.
Sure.
Could you just explain that it's cable, internet, phone, fiber, the speed, so on and so forth? Just a really quick.
Sure.
What it encapsulates.
Sure. So what we're here asking tonight is for a cable franchise. That's because that's the way that the, the agreements are structured by the FCC. Um, and so the cable franchise allows us to use the public right of ways to come in and build our fiber optic network and provide services. And I had, I backed.
Yeah. Turn your microphone.
So, uh, we offer, we offer video service, internet and phone. Products similar to the existing provider in town does. Um, our network is brand new. We come in and build a brand new fi- and it's completely fiber optic from, from our building all the way into the home. The advantages of that is that, um, the internet speeds are particularly a good advantage because we can offer symmetrical speeds. Okay. So if you're, I'm a Comcast cu- customer now. I have a, a regular hybrid coax, which is part fiber, part coax. If I do a speed test on my modem at home and I have three hundred download speed, my upload speed is somewhere between fifteen and twenty. All of our services are symmetrical. So if you, if you, if you purchase our six hundred meg speed, you'll get six hundred meg in both directions. If you take the one gig service, you'll get one gig or, or very close because there's some overhead a little bit, but it's very close. If you do speed test. The advantages of that are that if you are doing, and, and we kind of found this through COVID, is that people are working more from home since COVID. They're doing more telemedicine from home. They're doing more conference calls from home. And it's a distinct advantage to have symmetrical speeds in both directions. Um, it's a huge advantage. We also don't have any actives in our network. So if there's a power, if there's a, a lightning storm and the power goes out, our service is not dependent on commercial power, except in that building and in your home. So right now, as someone who used to work, every time the lightning would come on, you know, we'd have a lightning storm. We'd be out working. We'd have to go out and run generators to power the amplifiers to keep the system going. Um, so there's a lot, there's a lot of differences in the overall network technique. You know, our network is pretty much a state of the art, you know, it, it's good for a number of years down the road. Um, and so there's a lot of advantages to coming in with a fiber to the home network. That's all we build these days. Um, that's what we're building in the county of Frederick. That's what we're building in the city of Frederick. That's what the agreement states in Thermont. And so it's, and it's all new. So we're not using somebody else's fiber in these communities. We're actually building our own networks. So that's the advantage of, uh, of a fiber to the home system.
Thank you. At this time, um, we can, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we're going to allow Mr. Kincaid. Finally, you're invited to come up. Um, again, if you've already done your oath, if you just want to repeat your name, go for it.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Cliff Kincaid. A resident of Emmitsburg for about a year and a half. Uh, we finally got the snow. You promised us when we moved in back in July of last year. Uh, I'm here to support more competition, to support Chantel. I don't know anything about them, except that they're a new and growing company. They provide competition. We should be for freedom of choice. If you want their service, pay for it. If you don't, don't pay for it. My wife and I moved in on Irish Town Road. My mother-in-law lives next door. We all are forced because of the monopoly to pay for Comcast. I'm personally a writer. I do a lot of media work. I have to get access to a lot of media. I pay over two hundred dollars a month for Comcast. I got to believe that Chantel will give me a better deal. But that's impossible now because there's no competition. This is a no-brainer. Vote for competition. Vote for freedom of choice. Why has it taken this long to get competition in this market? Why has it taken this long to get competition in this market? Now politically, I'm a conservative. But I just wanted to read a quick quote from, uh, actually a liberal senator, Elizabeth Warren, talking about Comcast. And this is from, keep in mind, this is from twenty sixteen. So it's probably gotten far worse. Consider Comcast the nation's largest cable and internet service provider. Comcast has consolidated its position by buying up rivals. Today, over half of all cable and internet subscribers in America are Comcast customers. That to me is a monopoly and it's certainly a monopoly in a town like Emmitsburg. Where you don't have any other options. Again, I'm paying over two hundred, I think it's two hundred and thirty dollars a month for their various services and that doesn't even include the phone. I, I use a cell phone. So it's gotta be better than a monopoly. Look, there's one monopoly in the constitution and that's the postal service. And we understand that. We deal with that, even though now because of technology, we have emails, text messages and all the rest. But the provision of a cable and internet services is still a monopoly in this new day and age and it just has to be changed. My only question about the whole thing, I actually have two questions. Is how long is it going to take to get this new system in place to offer people an option? Years? Can it be shortened? Perhaps Mr. Costco can answer that. The other question I would have is in terms of how they uh, implement their system. I know when my wife and I moved in and my mother-in-law, uh, Ryan Holmes, uh, had conduits in the ground to accept the Comcast cable. And, uh, that went straight into the home. Then you bought, then you order the modem, the cable box. Or the cable boxes for your TVs, but you order the modem that connects. I, my only question about Chantel is, uh, do they use the existing conduits? That are in the ground. See over on Irish Town Road, we have nothing, no overhead lines. Everything's underground. Do they come in and dig new trenches, new conduits, or do they use the existing ones? Perhaps he could answer that. It's, you know, because potentially that could prove disrupting if a, a firm has to come in and dig up the ground. But for all of you folks who rely on telemedicine or need the internet to communicate or work at home like I do. More competition, the better, the quicker it's done, the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, at this time, we can invite, um, Mr. Costco back up as a rebuttal, if you would like to address some of those questions.
So yes, as far as the conduit ownership, um, or being able to, to run our lines in that conduit, it really depend on who owns the conduit. If it's, if it's a homeowner ran a line from the side of his house to the pole for his services. And he has one there for telecommunications. Uh, it would be, it'd be the homeowner's permission to allow us to do that. Some of the other utilities, they don't like to share conduits though. Um, for a number of reasons. Now, if we're talking about out in the, the, in an underground development, more than likely, especially for the distribution line, there's not existing conduit there we could use. So would, we would come in with a boring and we, we don't, we trench as little as possible. We use a boring machine. And, and I will tell you, and I've said this before, it, it is a little disruptive, especially in underground areas because we're in there. We, we sent the video to you. You know, this is fairly large equipment we bring in to bore. Now trenching is a lot more disruptive because now you're just churning up the earth all the way through. With a boring, we, we put in test pits that are about twelve inches by twelve inches every so many feet. And then the boring machine comes along and that way we can watch that we don't hit the other utilities. So there, and then we, we use, right now, we're currently using flush mount pedestals. So all the pedestals that I've seen are flush mount. They're not the raised pedestals. So you could end up with a pedestal in your front yard. Even though you don't take our service, but you probably could have that now with another utility. But as long as we stay within the public utility right of way, which is, you know, what, what the agreement really allows us to do. So, um, uh, I hope that answers your question. And it would be kind of on a case by case basis. Um, I've, I've seen where certain utilities, just they don't want you to share. Well, especially I'll, I'll name one and it's for a very good reason. We don't put anything in with an electrical utility, you know, with your power comes in. If it's underground with conduit, we wouldn't even think about going in with them. So, but if you have other utilities that are underground, either, um, telephone or existing cable line. And the homeowner owns that conduit. Um, if he gave us permission, then, then we would be able to use it in, in my opinion, so.
What the conduit I'm talking about only has the coaxial cable.
See that? Right. And now, yes, yes, yeah. Yes. And we would come in and we would bury a separate line if from someone's, the corner out, out where the public utility is, we would bury a new line to, up to the house. So we've stated this before, is once we have an assigned agreement, it takes about eighteen months to get started. And then it depends on how long after that. There's a lot of aerial construction here. Which sometimes can go quicker, but it all depends on the pole because we have to go and apply for all the pole applications. And it depends on how long it takes for the pole work to be done. So, but what we've been safely saying is that we will start around eighteen months after. Sometime it's been sooner, but I, that's a safe number. And we're doing an incredible amount of work in Frederick County right now, if, or will be in the next couple of years. So we will have a lot of construction crews here working. I would think a year, less than a year. Well, once again, I'm under oath, so I want to make sure. Somewhere across, and then how many, how many resident homes are in Emmitsburg? I should know that. I apologize if I don't.
Eleven, yeah.
Eleven hundred. Yeah, I would, I would say, safely say that we should be able to do the construction within a year, eighteen months at the most. Once we come in and get started, we want to come in and get everything done. And as we build an area, we can turn it up. We don't have to build the entire town to start offering services. We kind of build it, design it in two hundred home areas. So when we come in and build two hundred home area, we can, we can start to sell services there as we're constructing other parts of the town.
I don't mean to monopolize it. I think the critical point is, I think you made it. But it's important. You're using fiber optics.
Yes.
Comcast uses basically coaxial cable, copper cable. Isn't that true?
Well, I, I can't, I can't speak to what Comcast has here. I've not really, every time I come, it's dark. So I'm not sure. Um, what their system is. But I would think that it's probably what, what's commonly referred to as a hybrid system where there's fiber that comes so far and then a coax system is built. And generally with that, the coax drop is a, is a coax drop into the home. So I would suspect to them, I won't swear to it, but I suspect that's how Emmitsburg, that's how my system is at home. And then there's so many amplifiers in that system. To kind of boost the signal so far. So. And I'm, I'm a Comcast customer now. I, you know, I don't know what I would do without them because I don't have another option where I live. So, uh, yeah, I'm not here to, to say anything negative about Comcast. I'm more trying to here promote our side of the, you know, story, so. And we do have pricing. Um, I know Sabrina has probably the, if you wanted to see the pricing, we could bring it up again and that's. Just throw it up on the screen if you wanted to.
No, I think, I think we're good as far as what it, what we need, unless any other commissioners feel the need to.
And the pricing's on our website too. You can see it and it's pretty standard throughout the areas, so.
Thank you so much. All right. At this point, we can close the public hearing. Do I need a motion for that? No, it says close the public hearing and then you can have a discussion as a board about how you wish to proceed. I'm just reading the directions. I'm closing. Do I need a motion?
All right. You're good.
Close. We're good.
Discuss.
Discuss. All right. Who would like to give your thoughts? I, we heard from Commissioner Hoover and Turnquist and O'Donnell. Any other thoughts, discussions about? He said, you're right. You already heard mine. Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have anything to add or any questions? Okay, Commissioner Turnquist.
I'm good. Okay. At this time, then hang on. Want to call for a motion?
Yes. I'd love for someone to make a motion while I find what page I'm on. Do I hear a motion to approve the bid for purchase and installation? Nope. That was the wrong one. Gosh darn it. Page forty-two.
So tired. No, I got it. I got it. We'll make this happen. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the agreement with Chantel Glow Fiber? With the changes that were included? Do I have to say that? With the red lines?
That's a fair clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what is before the board.
Okay, with the included changes with the red lines.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Nay. Okay. Motion carries four to one with Commissioners O'Donnell, Commissioners Turnquist, Commissioner Sweeney, Bowman-Pallett for in favor and Commissioner Hoover against. Thank you for those of you who came out for the hearing and, um, to Mr. Costco for coming out as well. I know it's been a process. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow, sir. Thank you.
I'm wondering, okay. Moving on to the next section of our agenda. I, I know a few other people came out to talk about, or one person came out to speak about the meters and we did receive a couple of emails. Is that something we want to bump up in the agenda for the sake of those who are hanging out for that particular discussion? Commissioners, is there any reason why Ms. Willetts?
That's fine. I believe, um, is Maddie still on?
Yeah, that's fine. That way she can get to bed earlier. Okay. All right. So we're going to reorder and move to number six on the agenda, which is approval of bid for the purchase and installation of smart parking meters downtown for consideration. Okay. Is she there?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Bowman, how, how would you like to take this? Nothing that we've put back in the packet is different from the previous meeting. Um, I believe that staff has addressed all the questions that, um, we received from the commissioners regarding the proposal.
Yes, thank you. Um, I know there's been some emails that we've received through the town council at Emmitsburg MD.gov. I don't believe there was any that was received at the info@EmmitsburgMD.gov. Um, the ones that came to all of us as a council that I have before me are three. Um, two are from, uh, Mr. Andrew Neil Becker, uh, Becker and Hannah Shanton. They're both residents of West Main Street. And they are in favor of replacing the existing meters to upgrade for the capability of the smart cards, but we're not in favor of adding additional meters to West Main. I also received, we also received one from Ms. Chelsea Reed, who lives on East Main, asking about general lack of parking in, um, overall and saying how the current meters make it very difficult for her to go out and adhere to the two hour maximum. If she has to go out and manually feed it versus using a card, it would make it easier for her to validate. And did anybody else have, uh, oh, Mayor Davis, I know there was a, a discussion at the Doughboy. How did, how did that proceed?
Um, it went, went very well. It was a mixed, uh, mixed opinion. Commissioner Turnquist was there also.
Did you have a good turnout?
We probably had five families represented. Some had two and three people there, but it, uh, it was a very lively discussion. But, and, and it was, there were some for, for, for both yays and nays. I think the, the opinions that I've gotten from a lot of people where they're okay with replacing the meters, but they're really not keen on extending. Is, is what the drift I'm, I'm getting. Of course, some people want the meters taken out altogether and so. But then here again, and when I was sitting in your seat, it's kind of hard to, when you only have five or six people out of three thousand residents come out. What does that tell you? I don't, I don't know how we judge that on what their, their opinions are.
I agree, which is why I encourage everybody to come out and speak and send emails if you want, uh, to be part of the process. Um, having said that, I will say out of the emails and the, and the turnout at the Doughboy, I did not hear any residents who were in favor of extending the meters down West Main. Um, nor did I hear in any of these in favor of us extending it to the pool. Other commissioners, do you have?
Sure. I'll add that Commissioner O'Donnell was there too, but besides that.
So sorry, I'm so sorry. Well, you left. You, you cut out early. I'm sorry.
Take care of the kids. Okay. I, I will say this, this was a procedural one and it relates to the actual process of the meeting and I apologize for the tangent here. But, uh, I received very directly a criticism of something that I had done and I want to share it with you. Uh, during the meeting, there's a fairly lively discussion and the chair had asked a question. I was trying to answer it. It was very lively. I didn't want to add to the, the, the noise level in the room. So I walked over from my chair and I addressed the president and I returned to my chair. This individual basically shared that they were very concerned. They felt that wasn't a transparent action on my part. And I will agree, the optics of that aren't right. So I do apologize for that. And henceforth, I will wait for the, the column and I'll throw in my two cents when there's a need. But, uh, I felt the criticism was fair. So I'll, I'll address it that way. Regarding the input that I've received, generally the, the characterizations shared by Commissioner Turnquist, Commissioner, Bowman-Pallett and Mayor Davis, I, I feel is very accurate. Uh, I've heard one person actually speak in favor of it, but the, the bulk are, they don't want to see it extended any further on Main Street. Um, I, I sensed there was sort of a mixed, sort of, I felt fifty fifty from the input that I received related to the swimming pool parking lot. There's nothing definitive in one way or the other. So that's where we are. So I hope it didn't waste our time by sharing all that, but that's where we are.
I think it, the way I see this, it might be easier to break it down in, instead of lumping it all together. And I think when we lumped it together, that's where, um, it, it started to. It it started to. I I almost in my head saw it as a different agenda items or way to break it down. So I'm wondering if we should look at a motion for replacing existing. Parking meters. We could look at a motion then to separately for adding on to West Main and a motion separately for adding on to the swimming pool parking lot. That way, we don't throw the baby out with bathwater if it's all or nothing, one or the other, looking for feedback from commissioners or on that one. That's right. If there's no motions, it doesn't go anywhere.
Commissioner Bowman-Polat, since it's not on the agenda that way, you can't take three separate votes, but you can certainly fashion your motion that way.
Okay. Do I hear any motions anyway to proceed?
Under Roberts' rules, I can make a motion to amend the agenda to include three separate votes. With the majority of commissioners, we can get that passed.
I'm not sure about that because it doesn't give the public the twenty-four hours notice that you're going to be taking three separate agenda items with three separate votes. But that's why we have our town attorney here.
Yeah, I'm also a bit concerned about that. I mean, I hear you, I hear you to an extent.
The same agenda item, just broken down into three parts. So it's not changing the item that we're voting on. It's just how we're taking a vote on the item.
Well, isn't.
Item is the same.
Isn't the item just the bid approved, the the item and I'm.